Okay.
Welcome back. We're now continuing the meeting of January 3 budget hearing. We are now looking at the Finance Department, Capital and Operating Budget.
Yep.
And Mark Solinsky, who is our Administrative Director, will be talking about it.
Yeah, and the budget I have in front of you is essentially the same budget as 2011 for 2012. You know, we do the issuance of the Septic Betterment Loans. We're managing that. We did, they're doing much more, oh, I'm sorry, they're doing much more in terms of projects on the Septic Betterment Program than we initially intended. And we just secured another 10 million, the third $10 million issuance from the Assembly. So then we'll be issuing the bonds for those as they issue the project loans. So we're doing those. Right now, we have the auditors here who are doing the 2010 audit, and that should be finished shortly. We're also going to be completing the audit for CIVAC, which we will need done. And that will be the first audit that CIVAC has had completed for itself. And as you know, we manage the finances for CIVAC. It's getting a little bit more complicated than initially, especially because of the solar PV project that we undertook at CIVAC. We have eight installations on roofs across the Cape of solar PV systems. And I do billing, actually, for those. I bill the towns for the electricity that comes from the system, and then turn around and pay Connet Solutions, which is the owner of the system, for the energy that CIVAC takes for those. So it's a little bit more complicated, but it's been working good. It's going to get much more complicated if we're able to implement the solar PVs at the landfills that we bid out just recently.
Is that that solar array sort of thing?
That's the solar array, yeah. We've got, off the top of my head, about a dozen sites that have been bid on. We've shortlisted the vendors, so about three vendors right now that we're working or looking at a little bit more carefully. So hopefully, we'll be approaching an award, I guess sometime this month, I would say.
We extended it till, I think, the end of February to wrap everything up.
So these are towns that have asked CIVAC to go out and do the bidding for the towns? And so private companies are coming in to do this?
Yeah, Harwich is one, Brewster.
I voted a town meeting to support it. And I believe the other towns that you're going out for have successfully survived a town meeting vote.
Or they will in the upcoming spring town meeting.
So, and this is, from what I've seen, has gotten a lot more successful acceptance than the, you know, the terms of wind projects.
Yeah, there's still some, you know, regulatory hurdles to clear, like there are with everything. You guys talked about kind of the whole, with George, the landfill issue locating anything on a landfill. But this is something that I think the DEP is very favorable. They've done them before. They're working on a couple now. Doesn't permeate the landfill line or those types of things, so.
Now, is this to provide energy for the municipality?
Yes, municipality. It's like your project and founder.
Okay, so what would be the return? I mean, what percentage of energy would a solar array provide?
Depending upon the town. If you provide all of the energy, Town of Brewsters, it does not provide the percentage. Off the top of my head, I don't have that in front of me.
Typically, they're smaller, because typically, they're a little bit less efficient than a wind turbine, on the order of a net capacity factor of 14%, say, for a solar array, where you can get 20s and even 30s with a wind turbine.
Harwich.
And because of the space limitations, you don't get as much production. I think some of the sites are recommending maybe a two-megawatt installation. Most of them around one, I'd say, and then some of them are even a little bit lower.
Harwich is 100% satisfied, because they're a big project. But once everything is, I mean, once they've made their decision on who to finalize, then you can have an update on exact size, because everything is still fluid right now. We're still.
Also, it doesn't, it's all on that meter, so none of that really matters. Because you get cash. That's what you get.
What about the lifespan of a solar?
PVs are anywhere from 20 to 25 years. 30 depends upon, you know, technology inverters. Things have to be replaced.
Right, I was gonna say, what is the maintenance of a?
They're pretty maintenance-free. You have to, you conduct visual walkthroughs once a year.
Yeah, you just might have to replace the panels. You might have to replace the inverter. You have to, the only maintenance on site you really have to do is you want to make sure that any weeds or things that grow don't interfere with the sunlight.
There used to be an issue with regard to, when they weren't using glass, they were using Kevlar, for example, for, and there was a certain amount of deterioration because of the UV effect on, you know, on the Kevlar. So there had to be some inhibitors in it. But I don't, I don't know what the, you know, what the construct of these particular PV panels are. But when we talked about it, you know, at our Energy Committee meeting, we were, we were being told that we could expect a 15- to 20-year life on the panels that will be installed.
There is a degradation, a certain percentage, every year.
Half a percent every year.
The good news is, is these are owned privately. So this is a pay-as-you-go contract. You only pay for what you take. So it is in the owner of the facility's best interest to make sure that they are producing at the top, at their peak.
And that owner is actually the provider of the equipment. Where Harwich is supplying the site.
Yep.
And the contractor, the vendor, is providing the material, and we're getting the benefit of the output.
Yep.
So the, our exposure with regard to investment is eliminated. And I believe that that's the deal that's offered to the other community members.
Oh, you sign as the PPA, the Power Purchase Agreement.
I have a.
Is that good?
Yeah. The group insurance position?
Yep.
And the administrative assistant position. I didn't, I just realized I didn't address that in the Cape Light Compact budget, so it needs to be.
I think I did, what I was making on the.
Were you finished with the finance position?
No, it's kind of what she's asking about, because we've re-implemented. Remember, we did the study after the sheriff moved, and now, so now we're moving into, that hasn't quite fully implemented itself yet, but we're doing that. I think Michelle's just about done now. So we were doing, we went through a training process where we had the existing people kind of retrain the existing staff. And so we've done that. So in the, in the salary numbers that'll all get reflected, where we're basically down, I think, half.
You're down a half time, but in my budget, this is my mistake, and we can, it spills over into the Cape Light Compact. I don't have any time budgeted for the administrative assistance about that. And I don't think it's in the, we haven't talked about the Commissioner's budget yet.
You mean, the staff position, Karen. In the salary calculations, I did that under the Cape Light Compact's number.
Okay, so.
She's there.
And Cape Light Compact, general fund budget?
Cape Light Compact Energy Fund budget.
Because I'm only picking up half of her time.
Oh, okay.
So we're gonna need to pick up half of her time, that position time.
That's in the Cape Cod Commission budget, then, you think? I mean, the Commissioner's budget.
Yes. Yeah, because she's, yeah. Or the Cape Light Compact's general fund budget somewhere.
Well, you have to tell me.
But we need to have.
It should be in the County Commissioner's budget, half time in the Commissioner's budget, half time in Cape Light Compact Energy Fund.
What benefit will we get, since you brought it up, what benefit would the Commissioner get out of her?
We'll get some administrative assistance.
Well, right now, that's, she's the backup for the County Commissioners, the Finance Department, the dredge, for everybody. So right now, we're getting it.
Yeah, so it's kind of.
So it should be half.
That comes when we look at the Commissioner's budget, which I don't think we're gonna look at for a couple of weeks.
That's next week. Yeah, next week. And actually, that's part of an kind of interactive process, because you have to tell us what your goals are.
Well, the other piece on the, when we get to the Commissioner's budget, I want to bring up the topic of virtual presence. And that might also be a time to talk about what costs would be associated with this meeting at different times and at different places. Okay, that might be an appropriate place to talk about that. Do you have any questions with regard to any of the items on this meeting?
Just one. Under your budget line?
Yeah.
Where it says, "Software, hardware, maintenance." That 35, is that all maintenance? That's not acquisition of any software.
That's not acquisition. That's the licensing and maintenance fees for the units.
That's my only question.
Do you have any questions?
Not right now.
Bill, I have one more on the shared cost portion. It's pretty straightforward, but because of where we were, I didn't put any tuition reimbursement in the budget.
Oh.
For any of the county. We had previously had 15,000 in for tuition reimbursement. So I guess I would ask whether or not.
Yeah, I think we should, and this is for.
How many people are taking advantage of it?
Right now, nobody. In the past, if we've had several.
We didn't fund it last year.
I believe we funded one person, because I remember signing up for.
You know, if you funded anything, it was paid for from a department budget, not the overall budget. A department can ask for tuition reimbursement in their own department.
But I don't think we've.
Cape Light Compact was paying for that.
The tuition that was, that was paid for out of the energy funds for professional development.
When, just as a general question, before, you know, before we address this, in the private sector, there has to be a significant correlation between the courses that are taken and the reimbursement for the saw. For example, going for a general degree because it improves your.
Marketability.
Marketability is not something that a lot of private sector companies support. And if we begin to discussion, I would be concerned that if we have it as a general item, that there'd be some very high degree of specificity to the, to the use of the tuition reimbursement.
We do have a policy, just to remind you, we do a tuition reimbursement policy, which requires that they submit their request, the course description, for your consideration and within an explanation. And most of the tuition reimbursement that we have funded has been for our employees working on a master's degree, finishing, some, but not many, finishing up bachelor's degree. Most have been master's degrees, master's of public administration, master of public health. And the requirement is that you stay two years after the completion of each course, or you have to refund the money. We've also capped it, because we had, you know, graduate courses, $1,500 to $2,500. We didn't have that kind of money. So we've capped it at 500 per course. But we always have the discretion to look, it isn't, you know, yes, I'm in. You have to submit your copy of the course description and why you're taking this.
And a second question, just a second question is that when you talk about tuition reimbursement, I, for example, have complete tuition reimbursement at any state college. However, it's left to pay the fees. Do you reimburse both tuition and fees?
I can't remember.
I can't remember.
Because the fees, you know, the fees are pretty expensive.
It's usually a course, Bill, like, you know, most of our requests to date have been for, I'm going to take conflict negotiation as part of the Suffolk MPA program, and the cost is X. And they've, you know, they pre, they pay it, and then we reimburse them.
Okay, on the basis of what the total cost is, not just the tuition?
Correct.
Except, I don't think we've reimbursed textbooks.
No, we've never done any type of textbooks or anything like that. And again, depending upon the participation and how much money is, we've also limited it to, you know, your class might cost $2,000, but I only have 500, so it's a partial.
Now, you had a question.
I don't think, I don't think that they're required to get a satisfactory grade.
Well, that's, remember, it's reimbursed, so you have to show proof that you passed. It's a 2.7 or higher. And you have to prove that you paid. So it's not upfront per course, it's after you've done it. That's the Barnstable County Tuitions Reimbursement Policy. So we can throw it out there. We can see if you have the funding available. I'd have to go back and.
Talk about it next week.
And see what we've funded in the past.
Yeah, it hasn't been much. I think the maximum, maybe we funded it at one point in time. I was gonna say 30, 35, something like that.
Oh, I didn't think it was that high. I'll have to, I can go back and look. All right, I'll pull that.
Okay. There was, there was a question regarding the application, the cap on the cost. Just a simple, oh, do you have any other questions on the finance?
Not right now. I mean, we're gonna be discussing our budget next week, so we can always return if we have questions. Once we look at things.
Yeah, we can do that anytime.
I'm deferring any questions, leaving the ability to come back to this if I want to zero in.
Okay, then, there is always, there has been a question that could raise at the Assembly from time to time about the combination of the Director of Finance and the Administrator. What's your answer to that this year?
The same answer as I have every year.
Right.
Yeah. I'm not sure I understand. Do you have a specific question?
I used to have.
So.
Because, you know, the.
Should we pay two people?
Well, the question comes up, you know, Jordan Nelson was the Assistant Treasurer, essentially performs the treasurer's role.
She, the, she performs the accountant role, I would say, yeah.
Then, sure.
So that's how we, and that question has come up, Bill, even from the auditor, and the answer is, is that we split those two functions. So she handles the accounts and the treasury function, and I handle the finance and the budgeting function.
Okay, well, I think, you know, ask and answer. Thank you very much. Okay, so that would be, that would conclude our finance.
And I like, and, and answer the Sheila's question, we can come back to any of these anytime, if we want.
We now have the Cape Light.
I think that's probably a good idea.
Since it's your budget, you can have any question.
From the finance? No, it's the same, it's kind of a steady, steady state budget that reflects the changes from the Sheriff's Department, I think.
Cape Light Compact?
If people need a copy, I have a copy here. Do you need one?
Yeah, I need one too, I'm sorry. I think you printed these out five times. I thought we were supposed to be.
I did make a few extra copies.
Saving the world. Let's reach out to.
Well, maybe.
We should go paperless, one of these days.
We all have our computers here in Congress.
Yeah, we could do that. I've got mine still in here.
I hear that the Town Council's going paperless, Barnstable Town Council.
I thought that was you.
We went paperless a year ago. We all have our little.
Computers with you.
Yeah, or Kindles, as the case may be. It can be downloaded on the Kindle.
There's lots of questions that you can do outside the occasion with.
No, you can't. We have a rule. You cannot text or email.
How do we, how do we know what's going on?
I one time had to check on the score of the Patriots game, but that's the only time I've ever.
Oh, and see, and people will forgive you for that.
I have breaking news alerts in the middle of the meeting. Breaking news.
Oh, Town Council. I thought SEL is what I was thinking. I'm like, Council, there's no way. They go, they're, they're the chief consumers of.
That's right.
Town Council, CIM. I got you.
They're going paperless, so I read in the paper. So we could do that sometime.
We could do that.
Cape Light Compact.
Okay, most of the money that comes out of this budget comes out of the energy funds, right?
Yes, correct. You, if you notice there, if you go right through the budget, it is level-funded requests from last year. All the salaries and staff are funded outside of the County General Fund budget. So overall, you're looking at about a hundred and something thousand dollar budget of County General Funds.
County.
Of County Funds.
Is that the 10690?
If you added it up, I'm going with you.
That was about this problem line.
That's county, and the rest is.
On the energy efficiency.
From the energy efficiency funds, from the Cape Light Compact's power supply reserve. Those are, that, they fund the operating budget for the Cape Light Compact.
Can I ask a question? How many people, we have, how many users of electrical utility?
We have about 205,000 electric accounts.
That's what the Cape Light Compact is.
Do you have to ask, be a little bit more specific?
I wanted to, yeah, I was, they did finish it. I mean, no, I meant, I mean, who, how many households receive electrical power?
How many households purchase electricity and participate in the Cape Light Compact?
Not in the Cape Light Compact. I want the whole, I want the whole big fat number.
It's two, we have 202,000 roughly electric accounts, about 202, 206,000 electric accounts.
I think she wants another total amount.
I want to know, how many homes?
How many in Anstar, how many in Dominion?
Yeah, I want the whole enchilada. What's the biggest?
I have no idea what you're asking for. Two people are asking me questions, so try it.
I want to know, how many, how many houses?
How many houses on the Cape?
They're on the Cape. And businesses.
That receive electric power.
And we're getting, and they're, of course, they're getting electrical power. So what is, what is the pool, the entire pool of market?
In what, in, in a number of electric accounts?
In electricity, yes. Electrical accounts, of your electricity.
How many electric meters exist in Cape Light?
About 202, 206,000 electric meters exist on Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard.
Okay.
Oh, and?
And now.
They're about 10% plus.
And the Cape Light Compact, when a person signs up for the Cape Light Compact, you're in an aggregate, now you're in a, in a group that is now going to barter for better rates compared to what they would get if it was nobody, because this all came down from deregulation, right?
Mm-hmm.
So out of that number, you just said, how many?
About 163,000 accounts are on the Cape Light Compact's competitive supply rate.
Okay, so you'd have a better, you'd have a better rate if everybody joined?
Not necessarily, no.
No, it doesn't have, but wasn't that the purpose of it in the beginning, was to try to, well, not only expand energy efficiency, but, but if you would have a better, you'd have more SWAT in your negotiations for rates?
That's part of it. You have, the purpose was to represent consumers who independently would not have any, any leveraging for buying already. The customers who have left, the majority of them are large CNI customers who have lots of leverage independently and can, in fact, sometimes be more responsive to electric markets and get a better rate independently.
I see.
But the majority of our customers are residential.
Right, exactly. So if, if every resident signed up for the Cape Light Compact, they could be enhancing your negotiating power to help.
Most of the customers have, on residential side, are with the Cape Light Compact. Very, very few are not. It is mostly the commercial accounts that do not participate in the Cape Light Compact's program.
Right, okay.
And in some cases, they are running under a national program where they're, where they're already part of an aggregating process that's outside of the region.
Right, I see, I see. So it doesn't, even if they wanted to, it's not in their benefit.
All the federal accounts have been aggregated nationally, so they, they don't participate, which Post Office, Seashore, the base, so there's a lot of accounts that don't participate. The supermarket chains.
Yeah.
Aggregate nationally, so they don't participate. And they do better on their own.
Right.
What does the state do?
They're, are all over the map. They mostly participate with us.
I just wanted to, I was just curious, because, you know, I was talking to Helen, somebody at Wellfleet, and they were, you know, they were saying, you know, they were encouraging people, everybody sign on, because the bit more you sign on. And I'm like, you know, I just, I think that's true, but I just wanted to, and if it is true, it's good for people to know.
The issue is, is, you know, when you are in the competitive market, the difference, the key difference between for a residential customer, is the Cape Light Compact has enough leverage to negotiate a better contract. When you sign up for a competitive supplier as a residential customer, unfortunately, you are not able to negotiate out all of the pastors. So what people have experienced in the last five years is the volatility in pastors. They sign up for a rate that they think is really great, and then over the term of the contract, it changes, because they get pastors. And what the compact does is negotiates contracts such that all of that risk is put back on the supplier and not on the customer. So when you get a price, you get a fixed price, and it doesn't change.
It's like signing up for a credit card at 0%. And before you know it, you're up to 30.
Right.
Did you just get a new bid for your?
Yeah.
Maybe it was a good time to talk about that.
I noticed.
7.8%.
Have to go get them.
Okay, I was just, I was just curious.
It's a very interesting question, because when we established the Cape Light Compact, there was no vehicle for residential consumers. And indeed, I felt, and some of the Assembly members agree with me, that you could aggregate large commercial accounts. But the large commercial accounts were very, you know, very easy to, you know, fungible. They could go anyplace. Industrial accounts had very little margin, so they were popping from one place to the other. But I felt that as a public entity, and the Assembly and the Commissioners agreed, and I think at that point, Rob O'Leary was one of the, you know, one of the chief supporters of it, that until we had something that represented the interest of our consumers, you know, the people who live here, we really didn't have any business in being in here. So the whole motivation was, who would speak for the consumers on Cape Cod of electricity? And that's what we did, and that's why we subsidized it. Now it's got to the point where it supports itself. And one of the, one of the issues for other regions that want to go into it is that they've got to understand that there was a startup cost associated with it, which taxed dollars on Cape Cod supported until it got underway and had momentum. And now it's able to, let's take it to more or less support itself.
Okay, thank you. Do you have questions?
No.
Cape Light Compact, hurrah.
We can.
I believe the County Dredge is next.
The County Dredge is next. You know that there's always, before we leave Cape Light Cod, well, you know what, we'll come back to that another time.
We come back to other stuff, but not during the budget time.
Yeah, I will, that's right.
I mean, we could have it, yeah.
We'll come back to it. I'll come back to it another time. So now we're on the dredge.
Dredge.
We need another dredge. How can we get some grant money to get another dredge?
Well, I think we have to prove that you have a building.
That's where the money came from, from the state. They've put in, Kevin Mooney, that they've asked for it. It's just, the state is, as you read in the paper, is at $2 billion shortfall. So the only way, dredge, why the dredge was so successful is we had a million-dollar capital grant. So in order to purchase another, you'd either have to borrow a million dollars or you'd have to get a grant. We've asked, we've, you know, we've lobbied, we work very closely with state, with, I'm trying to think, it's not DEP, DCR, as they bring forward the request for an additional dredge, but it has not been forthcoming.
Okay. Yeah, I think that we should really keep an eye out, because, you know, there's more and more, not only need for it in as far as all this, but.
Well, with the wastewater issue.
With the wastewater issue, it's huge.
You know, wind and the culverts.
It's huge. And also, look at all the stuff we've had to go through in the last couple of years, you know, with the timelines and, yeah, so it's very tough. So I would just ask that we always, you know, that we be very proactive in pursuing that type of grant.
And perhaps we should talk about, what kind of strategy should we use in order to create a political will to support it?
Right.
So perhaps this doesn't belong to budget part.
No.
As much as it belongs among us to.
Okay, then I think that's a good thing to do.
My question was, like, how many projects do they do a year? Has it been increasing? Does it stay pretty much the same, because it's only one dredge?
We tend to do a lot of projects, but they're smaller in size, as opposed to large, where you're digging, what I mean, large, 50,000 cubic yards. They tend to be 4,000, 5,000, 6,000 cubic yards. And those are very expensive projects, because you have to mobilize from harbor to harbor. That's where your costs are in mobilization. So, but they.
And every harbor has to wait, and if they have to wait so long, then they get under pressure that they have to maybe even.
I mean, the schedule, because of the permit windows due to fisheries, is very narrow. And it's a very, this has been a good winter to winter. We haven't had a lot of ice so far, but you're working against nature, you know, the time. And we also, also have the summer, because nobody wants us dredging past in June or in July, or their equipment in July.
Or even Memorial Day, because remember, kind of hurrah, we went through two years ago, when we put the spoils out on the beach, was it Memorial Day weekend, yeah.
Well, that's because the windows were so short. They couldn't do it through the winter, because of some winter flounders, so they had to do it in these small periods. But we can go through the whole education of that.
We've made a lot of progress in having the state, with the retirement of a certain person, having the state look at not just an arbitrary two-thirds of the coastline of Massachusetts and having one application, but actually looking at each particular area and the temperature of that area in order to accommodate what, you know, what the, what the true reality conditions are. If we keep moving in that direction and have more availability, we'd have more justification for having an additional dredge.
All right. I'm sorry I brought it up at this point, but I just thought I'd try.
Maybe it could come out of wastewater.
I think that's an important issue, and I'd like, I'd like to see you sort of follow up on that.
That's one of the recurring issues.
It's a very recurring issue. And it has the potential.
You went to those meetings, you know, when you were on the Assembly.
Well, I think, I think it's not only a revenue generator for, but it's a very needed service, and it's an expensive service. It helps, it's huge, in many, many ways.
Well, I would, I would correct you, though. Right now, it's not a revenue generator, except to cover its own costs.
Right, exactly.
The county doesn't produce any additional revenue.
It's not the revenue as much as it's a contribution that it makes.
It's not a drain, it's not a drain.
But it does make a contribution to the revenue potential of all of those towns that have any type of beach, marinas, or recreation areas that depend upon clear and.
Yeah, the town's benefit.
So from that point of view, I think it's something that perhaps we could come up with, some type of sharing of costs.
When you meet with your elected officials, federal and state, a capital grant to purchase another dredge is what is needed.
Well, let me ask you this, though, is it. Well, let me ask you this, though. Is this an issue of permitting, or just the windows that are enabled?
It is, it's a combination of both, Mark. You know, they are, they are, they have agreed to look at the permits instead of having blanket dates, to look at it by, you know, each by harbor and by area, so that you can get some flexibility in moving the dates. But the problem is, is you have narrow windows, you have different types of dredging than what we have, that it could also be used. So we wouldn't buy a replicate of what.
Right, it would be smart.
Something that's a little more nimble, right?
So they're, but, you know, it's when Wayne put this, yeah, they're still million dollar.
Whatever happened to the Martha's Vineyard dredge?
They are still.
Are they still operational?
They're still operational, and it is, you know, it does function. You know, the only thing I will say.
Well, I guess, yeah, I don't want to put you in the spot. Is there an opportunity to do that, use that somehow?
No, we actually looked at purchasing it, or, you know.
Yeah.
They're not, you know, they don't run it like we run our dredge. The success of the Barnstable County dredge program is directly responsible to the staff. Like the Cape Light Compact, and a lot of our unique things that have come on in the last 10 years, we don't run them like public projects. We run them like a private enterprise. And if you started running them like public, really work, we would be toast. These guys work 5:00 in the morning, 5:00 at night, seven days a week. So there's a lot of, they work out in, outside the box, and that's why it was so successful. A large part is because we brought somebody who ran, that's how you run a dredge program in the real world, and they brought that ethic and technique to the public sector.
I think Barnstable County would cease to exist if we had the, what I'd call a public sector attitude. We have, I believe that, you know, part of our mission, which we state over and over again to enhance the quality of life, doesn't have a nine, let's say, nine to four.
Exactly.
Peaceful thing to it. Everybody here works very hard to deliver.
That was what I'm trying to, with how the Vineyard dredge operates for more traditional.
The Vineyard apparently has a, what I would call more of a traditional attitude than it got to these issues. But.
Are we?
But they don't have a county commissioner.
Now, the county dredge doesn't do, it doesn't allow itself to be hired for private projects.
Not for private projects. We've only worked, we work for the towns.
Right.
Towns have done dredging of private beaches and tourade for having a right of way granted, and they would put sand on private, for, in exchange for right of way. But our work is always with the town. What the town does in putting that projects together is the town's business, but we can, we contract with the town, not a private entity.
So what would be the cost, say, of a dredging project, say, an area of maybe? Delma Thaba? No.
Oh, say a half a mile. Long line, what comes down?
No.
Yeah, you can't tell.
I like a.
It's how far are you pumping the spoils?
Right, so it's a short line or long line, and how much?
Spoils is really the big issue, isn't it? Where does it go?
If it's just clean sand, you can go right on the beach.
What are you dredging, how deep it is? Where, how far are you pumping the spoils?
You're helping me prepare for a wet one here.
If it's, if it's mud, then it has to usually, it has to sit, it has to drain, and if the soils are not compatible with the existing beach, you can't put it there. You have to dispose of it in a landfill, which means you have to pay for it. So it just depends. Your sand has to be compatible with what's on your beach, and if it's not, you have to pump it, you have to put it in a containment area, it has to drain, and then you have to haul it out.
What's our base per cubic yard cost right now?
It's $7 for short line, $11 for long line.
What is that?
So distance, Mark was saying, it's the distance. If we have to have the booster pump running, and more pipe, and more fuel, it costs more to operate the dredge.
What's a short line? 3,000 feet?
A little under, but yeah, excuse me. We have 11,000 feet of pipe.
Yeah, if you get up to about, over 3,000 feet, you start needing the booster pump, and it's going to cost a lot more.
3,000 feet.
So one and a half.
Yeah.
3,000 feet is three quarters of a mile, right?
I hear it's a.
Little, little less than three quarters of a mile. It's 5,280 feet a mile.
Oh, yeah, right.
I'm repeating that.
See, 3,000 feet, do they worry about the noise from the dredge?
You know, at 3,000 feet, the dredge might be really noisy. Good point.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Good point, and flicker, too, you know.
Yeah, flicker, and turbulence in the water, you know, disturbing animal life as it takes.
No, we don't disturb animal life. We have done extensive permitting to make sure that we are digging sand at a time when you're not having fish spawn, et cetera.
That's right. That's, that was a big thing about, are the fish really, are the flounder really there at the time?
That's right. Flounder don't spawn in water below 32 degrees.
They go someplace else, yeah. Well, of course, flicker occurs in conservation areas as it goes through the trees, and I wonder if we shouldn't destroy those forests in order to avoid people from being disturbed by the flicker that goes through the high tree cover that's next to conservation areas. Could, something to think about. We certainly don't want flicker to bother people.
So we have to work on getting a million dollars.
Yes, a capital grant is what is needed. Otherwise, you're looking at having to borrow the money. In order to borrow the money, your rates would then have to increase to pay back your debt and cover your costs. Because as Mark said, the dredge is covering its costs and maintaining a positive cash flow for the equipment. Equipment, marine equipment breaks down all the time, so.
Sheila, if you were able to find that million dollars for the dredge, you'd probably have a guarantee of being reelected forever.
Yes, there you go.
So remember, the theory behind this is the state used to pay 75% of the dredging costs. Town was responsible for 25%. But the state never put any money in that little pool that was going to cover the 75%. So county, way back when, approached the state and said, listen, this is what we'll do. You give us a million bucks, we'll buy the equipment, we'll hire the staff, and we'll operate the dredge, and we'll only charge the towns the equivalent 25% of the market price. And we've pretty much done that throughout our existence. And that's what that $7 per cubic yard cost reflects, that 25%. And that's about right, I think, for now. If you wanted to hire a dredge project commercially on the street, you're going to pay probably four times that amount.
Yeah, oh, easy.
Okay, do we have anything else on the dredge?
No, but if you noticed, I have some new, the line items have been significantly rearranged due to conversations on how actual expenditures are occurring. So I, we started out putting them in large, you know, large amounts in one line item, but we've gone back to allocating them to multiple line items, because that seems to work better for managing the line, the budget. That's really the only change.
Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, I believe that that would, if you have no questions, I believe that concludes our budget discussion for today. And I think that what we need to have now is the information on what we should have.
Next week.
The next week being a week from Wednesday, the 12th of January.
12. 12 o'clock.
We haven't talked about start, I don't think, did we?
Start time, you mean?
Here's packages.
Let's see, does the.
This is your next week budget package.
Thank you.
Who's?
I would ask that you start in the morning, because we have elections in the Cape Light Compact.
Oh, I think we did say, yeah, I think we, all of our budget meetings start in the morning, because they pretty much go on.
Go all day.
Okay.
Right, January 12, 9:30 is what I.
Is that, is that the next Cape Light Compact meeting as well?
And you need to be there, too.
Okay, so it's not this Wednesday?
So why don't we start at 9:00? And I thought that worked pretty good, the way you do your business.
Yeah, I think 9:00 is good.
And then budgets, 9:30 is our, is kind of our internal discussion.
It's kind of late.
And then at 10:30, I have EDC, but of course, that's not going to be, so what we should do is do the revenue discussion then.
Okay, what time do you, what time are you suggesting we meet on the 12th?
I would say start at 9:00. Do your stuff, do whatever we need to do, and then 9:30, we start the budget stuff.
And then how long will that go until?
No.
If we did, if we go according to this, allowing 45 minutes per item, would that be too much?
I, I would say, given how today operated, the schedule that you have in front of you is pretty accurate. So we get 9:30, a 10:30, which will now be a budget discussion, I mean, a revenue discussion. 11:00, Andrew will come in for Water Protection Collaborative. Then at noon, we can break, and then at 1:00, we'll do Children's Cove, 1:30, Human Services, and 2:30, Resource Development.
Bill, you need to be in the Cape Light Compact board meeting at 2:00.
Okay, so.
For elections, he can step out, but he needs to be there.
Yeah, well, you can come and remind me of that. And if I, if, well.
So.
So we'll meet at 9:00, and then we'll, we'll say that we'll, 1:30 would be the last.
How about we do this, since we don't really have the 10:30, and the 9:30 is, county commissioner, that's internal, I can try to move Andrew and everything.
Can you move him up?
Up to the 9:30, so that you're done by 1:30.
1:30, I would like to shoot to get done by 1:30.
I could try to do that.
If that's agreeable with the rest of you.
That's fine.
Okay, so 9:00 to 1:30 is what, for the 12th. Now, in your opinion, do we need any other dates to do any of this budget stuff?
This week.
And then the 19th, you do fire training, we have an open budget discussion, we do deeds, extension, human rights, and then on the 26th, we'll do arts, elder services, IT, and then we'll have general budget discussion. By that time, we'll need to know if we need to go back.
Okay.
Typically, we have not gone back too much. So by the time we reach the end of January, we're pretty much, we know what we want to do, and we're.
Yeah, right now, we're sort of hearing everybody out and then saying, let's go take a look over at this now.
Right, and also.
What are we going to do about it?
You, you haven't seen, I, I haven't seen what the picture is. What does the total request picture look like? You have a sense of what the revenue picture looks like. I really need to get my hands on the retirement picture, which is more in focus now. We know a little bit more about that and what that number is going to be. I don't really know what the health insurance number is. I'm using 10%. Hopefully, it'll be less than that.
That's what I was going to say. I'm meeting the 19th, I'll know. But 19th, and the board approves it on the 26th.
I think last year, what happened was I built in 10%, and then went back and took some of that out, because it was only 6% or 7%.
But I'll know the 19, I have a, I have a steering committee meeting on the 19th, and a board meeting on the 26th.
So by the 26th, we'll have a really good picture of what the budget is.
So you'll send us a schedule with each one we're going to take off next Wednesday?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I'll write it all pretty quickly.
But I will revise this to show you 9:30, and I'll look at it, yeah.
Yeah, because he's going to put in the internal, he's taken out the EDC out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so you can give us the, the schedule of who's coming when.
Yeah, well, you already have this schedule.
I do?
Yeah.
Several, several times.
Okay, oh, yeah, here it is, right here.
So you have that.
I do have it.
But for next week, on the 12th, I'll have to revise it a little bit.
Okay, so we're taking out.
And when we send out the revision.
We'll send out all the other stuff with it.
And we're putting Andy in at 9:30?
Yeah, I'm going to try. Hopefully, that'll work.
All right. Do we have anything else on schedule?
Yeah, we'll shift around whatever.
We have, we have had a vote to approve the needs, the needs action.
Yes.
Did we have anything else that had to be added at this time?
I have my report, although it's a short one.
No, I was asking if were there any.
You mean as far as, didn't he already?
No, I know we did, but.
No, I have nothing to add.
Yeah, we have moved it aside.
Yes, so I have nothing to add now that you. Okay, what's your report?
So you want my report? Here's, it's just a short one for this week. I'll have more next week.
You can tell us what your vacation.
No, it was very out of apple, it was very relaxing. Had to clean out from the big snowstorm on Monday. Which you, which you got, which we, Cape didn't really receive anything. John Blaisdell called me at 6:30. He said, I said, John, that's really, it's kind of late, you're calling me. He says, that's because we don't have anything down here.
Yeah.
Well, I was in Washington, and we didn't have anything really down there either, but I had enough foresight to change my flight ahead of time before Christmas, and got out only two days late, as opposed to I would have been there until this Saturday. So, because Boston getting socked in New York.
Okay, do you have any questions on, on this report?
So on my report, I'm sorry, go back to that.
All right, we already touched the county clerk. Now we have the county hospital. As you're aware, we continue to have medical records at the county hospital. We need to keep these for 30 years.
And I'm, I'm starting that kind of destruction process for the 30-year-old records now. I send off a, I have to, I have to notify the state archivist and say, please give me permission to destroy these records. And we have a, we have all the boxes numbered, and I know which ones they are, and then they send me back a letter that says, sure, go ahead and do that. And I notify Iron Mountain, and we get rid of them.
So, is that a good thing?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, no, that's what they do.
It's a good thing. It doesn't really matter. It's what the state, the state law.
You know, just saying, now you can just transfer the stuff onto some sort of.
Iron Mountain is very good, and there's a lot of protection.
Yeah, well, I know the whole setup is good, but I guess it's good.
As opposed to doing what?
Just 30 years, it's time to get rid of things.
30 years? No, you're required by law to keep medical records for 30 years.
30 years.
Yeah, we don't have a choice.
Some you have to keep for.
And that's what I'm saying, I wonder if there's anything.
Well, other records are permanent records, like payroll records and things like that.
Well, actually, there's, some people would say that, that in researching a community, you want to know something about records. However, there is a requirement of confidentiality with regard to looking at private records. And I don't believe that these.
For medical records, I would require either the person themselves sign a piece of paper saying, please release my medical record to either themselves, or they have to tell me, someone has to be the executor, or the, they have to have power of attorney for that person's medical records. Otherwise, we won't release.
The, there was, there was an issue for people with regard to tracing, what is that called, congenital issues?
Disease, and, yeah.
You know, among family numbers. But I believe that, that was a TB cemetery at one point, wasn't it?
I'm sorry, I brought it up.
I think that's what started.
Yeah, that was back in the 19th century.
Okay, I, I regret, it's getting to be 3:00, and we all have to, so I, it was, it's really just a philosophical question, not anything to do with what you're recording. I do, too, I know, but I don't think it's super here.
Bill's question, philosophical?
Yeah. No, I mean, no, why, like, you know, is it, is it, you know, how can you keep those things? For different, for reasons, you know, historical, you know, anthropological.
Because we're required by law.
I know, I know. So now it's time, so let's move on, because we've digressed into a totally different area.
And so you were talking about the county clerk thing, and you heard my two cents, and so that's about it.
So you've got to schedule them on the, on there for the 12th, right?
I will ask Jack to be present.
I'm looking to see what you're looking at.
Oh, no, I was just looking, he was just saying that it's time to destroy these, and that process has started. He was just reporting that he started the process. I'm thinking, I'm, I was not sticking with, it was just being stated. I was digressing.
But the public records law is very specific, and it tells you for every little matter how long you have to do it.
Right.
Pretty much, yeah.
I, I know that. Mine was a philosophical question.
January 15.
But, you know, that could make it.
You really want it?
January.
Ones that I'm a head of.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Who was the maturity hustle? Different story.
You say.
We're all talking.
Maternity, maturity, maturity.
You said maturity.
You said maturity.
I mean, maternity.
I thought you meant a maturity.
Question, January 15? That's the Wednesday?
Yes.
19, January 19.
That's the next, that's the week from, yeah.
That's a week, two weeks from today.
Yeah, that's.
And is that a long day? What do we have?
We have the schedule for that. We start with fire training, then we have an open meeting, an open hour or so to talk about general budget items.
All day.
And then at 11:30, we have registry of deeds. At 1:00, you have corporate extension, and at 2:00, human rights.
If I was not concerned, every, every Wednesday in January is full days.
They're going to be, the 26th is a little bit less full. So you have something.
Not, not an issue.
Well, the thing I could try to do is move.
No, you don't have to move anything. It's fine, the way it is.
I was going to say, moving human rights up, like the 10:30 slot.
Oh, yeah, well, that might help you get out later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, let's do that.
Because she has an appointment later in the afternoon.
Yeah. So we try, that's why I try to keep these things a little flexible.
So I thought we were going to go to the. Waiting for that trip. I'm going, someone go with me. I'm waiting for that trip, someone to go with me.
Don't forget the M M A, and you might want to, you talked about this a little bit offline, just make sure you confirm everything you're supposed to confirm.
Could you tell me the dates again? Kara said she has everybody all set up, and she will let us know.
Friday, the 20, 22nd?
21st.
21st?
We go up on, so we're there Friday and Saturday, whatever your book is, Friday and Saturday.
I go Thursday, because I would like to...
Yeah, I sort of wish I...
We go up on Thursday, I mean, with the delegation, so you might want to think about things for us to talk about with the delegation, like the dredge capital fund grant.
What were the dates again?
Is that January 22nd?
Conference starts Friday morning, January 21st.
21st, okay.
The 20th, the 21st, the 22nd. And Kara can tell you when your home, when your reservation is...
Get it in here, open the appointments, and then go, oh, wait a minute.
Okay, just one other thing, do you have any reports from, from the commissioners on, on activities?
Uh, the only thing I can say is that I went to the homeless memorial service right before Christmas, which was, you know, I think everyone should think about attending that service, it's not long, it's very beautiful, it makes you stop and think about how you are, God bless you, and how misfortune falls on others, and it was just a very nice night, and, you know, you heard from some, some very compelling stories that made you think. So, I think that's all I have done, I'm sure I've done many other things, but other than attend, represent as best as I can among holiday revelry around the county, but, and I've kept my composure and my decorum, so I just had that to...
I didn't read anything in the paper, did he?
Yes, that's right, so that's because I've been behaving.
Kathy, you have anything?
Well, I just wanted to say that we all picked, well, you didn't, because you couldn't, you were in the accident, didn't know what to do on, which ended up exceeding the expectations.
$70,000.
Yeah, that was really good.
Very good.
It must be because we're getting more involved.
Probably because I didn't show her. And I just want to, first of all, thank you very much for electing me county chairman, I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
And I'd like to start off by saying that I particularly want us to think about, every week, to suggest topics for future agendas. I want you to keep thinking in those terms, because I, I think that's the way they get scheduled, and we, and we meet the spirit of the open meeting law, but it's, the most important thing is that we should all put things on the table, that we should be, you know, that we think are of interest, you know, to the people that are here. And I'd also like you to think about owning a particular area of policy oversight and programs related to that policy, and by that, I mean, we're all, we've all selected areas to be, to participate in, I would like you to, you know, to consider that your role, our role for those areas is to provide oversight and report back, in other words, we own that,